Good morning, everyone. Before we call the meeting to order, I'm going to ask the Council Secretary if she would to stand and come over here and let me present her with a 25-years of service certificate to this city.
She started when she was two.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
She's only 35.
The youngest employee. Youngest employee up.
We'll call the January 3rd, 2012 meeting of the Jackson City Council to order. Ask Councilman Charles Rong if he would lead us in our invocation and prayer and pledge.
Pray with me. Dear gracious God, we come to you this morning thanking you for loving us.
Yes.
Dear Lord, we are so blessed by you and what you have done for us as individuals and as a community. It is my prayer this morning that you lift this body up, let the decisions that we make be those that are beneficial to our community as well as pleasing unto your eye. I just ask that what we do on a daily basis will be reflective of you drawing others to you. It's in the name of your son, Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Now, you can show all the council present with meetings. Item 3, item 4, approval of minutes of the December 6, 2011 city council meeting. Those have been distributed council. And if there are no corrections or additions, we'll just declare those minutes approved. At this time, we'll indicate invitation for public comment. If there's anyone present who would like to be heard on any item under new business, if you'd make that known at that time. If you would, we have no proclamations today. Item 7 is first readings.
Yes, somebody coming in.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, I kind of bring a rise to an agenda item that came up at the meeting back here, about $75,000 to put an addition on to the Pringle Park area. My concern is this. In dealing with the curfew issue, they said the parents should be able to parentage their kids all the time, be aware of your children's net. So, at the Pringle Park, if I'm not mistaken, this gentleman sitting right here, he came in, he said that, you know, children's attention span only has three hours. Children have three-hour attention span. And so, to keep them from getting into trouble, they were wanting to build a park for their parents. Now, you told the community for this curfew that the parents should be responsible for their children at all times. So, they're at the park drinking beer at Pringle Park, and then three hours later, they want to have something to do with their children, they built a park for them. But you do nothing for our community. Our community has same for our children have three-hour attention span. If that the case, why doesn't the city put something in the park to help curb that? You would put a curfew in place to put the police on us, but you would build a park out here for your constituents out here at Pringle. $75,000 for a park? You got baseball field all around that park. You know, so, I said, I think it's unfair for the city government to treat our community like such. We're taxpayers too. I pay taxes. A lot of people in the community pay taxes. You just take $75,000 and build a babysitting area for them, but you would put the police and the city court on the juveniles in our community. I don't think it's fair, and I think that money could be spent better in other parts of the area. You put money out there for the last five, six years out there park. You have done nothing for our community. Congress found a way to send money out here outside our community. All through the storm, Mr. Gibbs, Mayor Gibbs, City Council, our community is up. And for you, for Mr. Congress to bring a curfew ordinance up. And then, on the backside of this, you bring a $75,000 allocation to put in the park to help these parents watch their kids, but you do nothing for our parents to help them watch their children. I don't think it's fair, and anybody in the rational mind wouldn't think it's fair. So, I think that if you can put $75,000 out there in Pringle Park to build a playpen, a babysitting area for their constituents, you should be the same amount of money in our communities. We have no park. North Park is like small Disneyland out there. Shirley and Mercer Park is like a desert. Kids don't have nothing to do in our communities. But you would rather lock them up. You would put the police on them, draw a database against them, for nothing they've done. They commit no crimes yet, but you would hold their feet to the fire and let the affluent community get off with a babysitting area. I don't think it's fair, Mayor Gibbs, and I think the $75,000 should be put in the East Jackson community. You putting up out there.
Okay. Thank you for your comment, which leads to the item 1 under first readings. If you would strike that from the agenda, I think we'll defer that until next month. Item 8 would be second readings. Consideration of ordinance to close and abandon a six-foot section of excess right-of-way for Wiley Parker Road. Council approved that on first reading. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item 9, under new business, acceptance of the street in Tradition Section 1, Dayton Cove, Plymouth Cove, and a portion of Livingston Way as depicted on the attached map.
Good morning, Mayor Council.
Good morning.
This is a subdivision, well, a few subdivision streets that have gone through our subdivision process. They have been dedicated by Final Flat, and all the improvements have been done, and the former bonds have been released, so they are now ready for acceptance.
Is there a motion for acceptance of this street? Have a motion? So, second.
Second.
Second. Discussion from council.
Quick question, Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
How long does it normally take for a street to build before we actually accept it?
Well, normally, it's about a 12-month process, but if the subdivision is moving slow, sometimes we'll extend that process through an extension process, and then they'll get a little bit down, because we don't want them to finish the final surface of the street if there's still construction and heavy traffic on it and tear it all to pieces. So, sometimes it goes longer, but most time it's within a year.
How long is this? Is this longer than that? It looks like it's totally built out there.
Yeah, it's...
So, this is a normal, longer than normal problem?
Well, we've got several subdivisions that in the recent time, they've been extending a little bit further because, again, the residential construction has been moving so slow, and we didn't want to build the streets and finalize them with still, less than 50% of the houses even constructed and then have heavy traffic just tear it up.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, any discussion? No, we have a motion and a second. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you, Stan. Item 2 is presentation by the Jackson Chamber of Commerce. Kyle Spurgeon, Kathy Watts, they're present. Come on up. Charlie Jones. Is here a good substitute I may have?
I don't know about that. I think there may have been some miscommunication. I just texted Kyle and asked him if he knew he was on the agenda this morning. He said, "No." So, but on behalf of the Jackson Area Chamber of Commerce, I do want to say thank you to the mayor and the council for all your support of our activities throughout the year. We've had some good expansions lately, and we're working on more, and we're very excited about that, and lots of great things going on in our community. And we couldn't do what we do without your continued support, and we just want to thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie. Item 3 is budget amendments. Ms. Bell.
We have two budget amendments this morning. The first one is Pringles Park, and Mr. LaFune can address a little bit. We're asking that $433,610 be moved into capital for Pringles Park for luxury suite upgrade, video board upgrade, and playground, and Mr. LaFune will address that.
We talked in our meeting about the budget amendments that we have in front of you there, and I'll go into a little more detail. Basically, on Pringles Park, we're talking about renovating the suites, which hasn't been done for the 12, 13 years that we've had the luxury suites. And they are rented out. The city does have one. The ball team has one that they rent out on a nightly basis, and then people like the Jackson Sun, the Bancor South, and many other firms have suites that they pay like $18,000 a year for. So, this is basically an upgrade of the carpeting and furniture, things that have over the 12, 13 years showing wear and tear, and we need to do, we feel we need to do that for those who are paying $18,000 a year to rent those. The next item on there is the upgrade of the video board, and basically, I explained to you that the video board has not functioned properly for three years since the 2008 season. It's cost us roughly $12,000 to $15,000 a year to maintain that. It's old technology. We did receive $178,500 as it's shown in insurance benefits, and we could turn around and just replace that video board as it is. But basically, it's old technology. It's not capable of doing the things the ball club would like to do as far as between innings entertainment, and it's not, in our opinion, the way we should go, because we'll be back again in another three or four years looking at an upgrade. It's just new technology that's available to us that will increase the entertainment aspect, the family entertainment, which is really what finally ball does. It's not so much who wins the games as the entertainment that's provided to the community and the economic development that is a result of that. Then, the item that the gentleman was speaking about before is that we would like to consider putting in a playground area there that would be supervised, because it is true that younger children have a shorter attention span, and to provide a full family entertainment venue, we feel we need something of that magnitude. Are there any questions as to...
The video board you're talking about?
Yes.
The original video board, did the city purchase that, or was that...
Well, that was part of the scoreboard slash video board that the Lozenacks, which were the previous owners of the ball club, put in around 2003. It was a million-two venture, but they put that in, and of course, anything that's put in by the ball club stays with the park.
Okay, so that would have belonged to the city after they put it in, so it's replacing it because it's actually city property?
Right.
I guess my concern there is that of the capital outlay budget that we've got left, this has spent about 60% of our unreserved fund balance. We're spending almost all of our capital outlay money on the park, and I've got a little concern over that, but do we know anything else? And I guess with the unreserved fund balance, we probably don't, but do we have anything else on the burner that we know we're going to need for capital outlay expenditures for the rest of the year?
Well, that's sort of a difficult question to answer, because things occur over the period of time. Karen can tell us what's left, if anything, in the unanticipated expenses.
Unanticipated expenses has a balance of $69,000 right now.
I'm sorry?
Everything else has been used.
$69,000.
Unanticipated expenses that we've been pulling from has $69,000 left.
This is coming out of the fund balance of the capital outlay. That's what I'm referring to, is capital outlay had about $444,000 in unreserved fund balance, and we're eating up about 60% of that with what we're spending here was my concern, so...
Well, when we put together the plan for the $10 million bond issue that we floated back in August, we basically had items identified in gross terms, and one of those was like a million dollars for police and fire radios as they went out. And so far, I think we've only replaced like 20 radios. So, we would hope that we could use some of that money, which I know there's other people looking to spend that million dollars, but it seems right now at this point that we're not going to be expending a million dollars for those radios.
Okay. But if we don't this year, won't that come up next year?
Well, as they...
As they go out?
I have a concern also. We're talking about spending over $400,000. Fire Station 3 is dilapidated. I mean, it still has a red X on the front of it from the 2003 tornadoes, and they haven't had any money to even paint the building, but we're spending money on an entertainment facility when our police and fire should be a priority in our spending.
I couldn't argue with you as far as priority. Let me give you just a little overview of what we've got invested in Pringles Park for those of you who are new to the council or even those that have been around for a while. Basically, to take you back to 97, when we floated the bond issue, and I wasn't here myself, but the stadium cost was $8 million, and we took $1,500,000 out of the general fund, and we ended up in the 97 bond issue, which was a large issue of $33,000, $34 million. But we borrowed $6,500,000. And basically, you can see the years that 2012 where we're at right now, we still owe $2,500,000 on that, but it will be paid off by the year 2017. 2016, really, is when we make our last payment. So, we have four more years to go on that. So, we have an investment there. You can see we borrowed $6,500,000. By the time we pay the principal and interest, it will be $9 million. So, we have $9 million plus the million and a half we took out of the general fund, so let's just say $10,500,000. Now, what has helped us pay that in addition to our normal tax revenue is the naming rights on the park itself from P&amp;G, a million-two we took in from them over the time period. And then, in case you're not aware, because of, we didn't get the sports authority status, but we did get the legislation, this is going to have to really be a zoom, but over that period of time, let's see if I can really get in here, we've gotten $1,824,000 back. So, from the concessions, the gift shop, the anything that's sold within the park itself because of state legislation, and this is the way any municipality does it, most of the larger municipalities have a sports authority where they get even larger dollars. But the first line is what we get back on local option tax. The second line is the big one, what we get back on the 7% sales tax from the state. So, that $1,800,000 plus the $1,500,000 in naming rights, so we really have $3 million to go against the $10,500,000. But we have a very significant investment out there. I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of the monies that have been put in and the monies that have been recouped to help us pay that. I can't argue with you as far as priority. All I can say is that it's like any other business venture. We either upgrade and keep up with technology and the offerings for the people to bring them to the park, or the attendance declines, and then we are stuck with paying off $2 million and not getting the revenues from the people themselves and from the state recovery.
I guess my question would be, do we have to do all the upgrades at once? Can we not stagger the upgrades and then use some more money to allocate to a dilapidated fire station?
Well, the video board either needs to be replaced or upgraded. I mean, we can't just have a flat screen there with nothing on it. So, that has to be, decision has to be made on that.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Good morning, Mr. LaFune.
Yes.
I understand about the technology that needs to be replaced, and I'm in full concurrence with it, but with respect to the luxury boxes, do they need upgrading at this time?
I would like to...
Yeah, you know, again, I think everything we do as a staff and the council, you know, we have to look at priorities, and obviously, the one thing that we're having a look at is we've got a stadium that's 12 or 13 years old that by virtue of the rules of Major League Baseball, there are certain standards that they hold the franchise owners to and the owners of the stadiums to in order to meet certain standards nationwide. So, I think the suites have been there for, you know, since construction. Not a great deal's ever been done to them, and I think if we continue to lease those on a yearly basis for how much?
$18,000.
$18,000, that the ones who lease those suites expect, you know, expect to have a decent area for their people to go into. If the council wants to look at each element of this and make a decision on which ones we do now, be fine, but I do think the suites do need to be upgraded, because they have not been since the ballpark's been constructed. And obviously, the video board has to be replaced, because that is a part of the standards of Major League Baseball.
I have a question, if I could.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Councilman Siskin.
Do you have any figures on what the economic development effect is set on the city of Jackson, Pringles Park? It's substantial.
We've had a study, Younger and Associates did one. Al, you remember the outcome of that?
It was done when we established the TIF back in 2007. I believe the number, Mayor, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but over the whole period of time that the Pringles Park was there, something like $6 million was the economic development. And that takes into consideration, you know, people spending money at restaurants and motels.
Okay. And plus the fact of attracting new business and industry, what that part means to us.
Well, here's the problem that I have with it. I don't like the idea at all of taking that money that we borrowed and using it for this. I just believe that when you tell the taxpayers we're borrowing this money for a particular reason, that we ought to use it for that. I just think that's accountability. And so, we said we'd use it to build a new fire station, and we've not built that yet, but we will be building that. I don't know how we could know now how much money we would have left of this money, and yet we're wanting to do this now. That seems the cart before the horse, so it's problematic for me to even think about using that money for this. And I do agree with Councilman...
I didn't use the fire station money at all.
Yeah, okay. I thought you said the 11 million that we borrowed.
We borrowed 10 million.
Oh, 10.9.
We had to come up with rough budget numbers.
Exactly.
Now, the fire station was an exact number.
Okay, okay.
So, we did have no idea when these 400, 500 radios are going to go out. Some of them may never go out.
Right.
So, we put in a worst-case scenario.
Okay.
And I only suggested that if there were monies left there...
Right.
We would use that, not to take away.
No, I understand that, but if and when that time comes, and we don't know that yet, but if and when that time comes, because we don't know what's going to happen to these police cars, I mean, they may need several tomorrow. I mean, heaven forbid there be an accident, but anyway, I just, I don't like the idea of saying we're going to spend the money one way, and then we decide even before that money is fully spent, that we're going to do something else with it. There might be a lot of wiser ways to use that money.
Well, I probably...
Even paying back on that debt, you know, that we borrowed, so...
Let me go back and just say, the budget amendment is not showing that we would use any of those funds. It's going against fund balance. I only said that if there were monies left, we could use it.
And I would be against that. I want to go on record, I would be very much against that, so... But you're saying we have the money in fund balance, is that what you're saying?
Right. The only thing I think the council needs to look at, not the only thing, several things, but we do need to consider that we have something that we have put 11 million dollars into, right, wrong, or indifferent. We have an asset. As long as we have a team there, and we have people coming, and it's showing economic development, you know, we're paying back that. If we don't have a team, and if we don't draw people and provide entertainment, we have another owner arena. We have to look at that fact. It could turn out to be...
But we've seen this coming evidently. I mean, we didn't just discover yesterday that these luxury suites were needing updating. We saw this coming, so I wonder why we didn't think about putting that in the budget.
Well, that's probably my error, or not really.
I have a question, if I may.
Sure, Council.
If Councilwoman Foote has finished. My question, Al, is why wasn't this, these items included in the original budget that we voted on in our last budget process?
That's my question, and we didn't put that in there. I guess the only thing I can say is I didn't do it. That's my error.
I think it may have been brought to attention too by the owners of the ball club and the ones who really are responsible for leasing those suites that they are dated and $18,000 a year. It's a fairly expensive price to pay for one season of baseball.
One other question, Mayor. Would it be possible to use TIF money to fund this?
I don't think so.
Now, the TIF project that was approved did not include this. I mean, you could in the future establish, dedicate TIF funds, but the TIF that's approved right now was for the outside of the stadium, the land that's outside of the stadium that's...
Okay, I know we've got that money dedicated. I guess we've got the current money coming in for the next several years dedicated to that redevelopment for the backside, so there's not any TIF money left to do this with. Is that...
That's true.
Unless it would be way on down the road, you know?
I would need to tell you also, and the mayor mentioned, that there are certain standards for the minor league ball, and for example, right now, for the last three years, we have failed the audit, because there are dead spots in right center field as far as the lighting. So, we have been sidestepping a lot of capital that, according to our audit by the Southern League, we should be spending. So, as far as being able to foresee these things, I've kind of procrastinated putting some of these things on the table. We could put right now $200,000 or $300,000 for lighting improvement to meet the minor league requirements, but we're trying to work around that. So, we've tried to be very conservative. I don't think there's been many major capital improvements, at least in the five years that I've been here, to the ballpark, and it is $11 million asset that we have, so we're either going to take care of it. And in the case of the luxury suites, Councilman Brooks, you know, like the mayor said, people are paying for those $18,000 a year, and the Jackson Sun and Bancor South and numerous others have made comments that in order for them to bring their clients into that atmosphere, it needs to be, you know, a respectable-type situation.
Mr. LaFune, I've heard you mention two or three times, $11 million. The stadium was six or seven. The Sportsplex was 11. Is the stadium $11 million?
What I tried to explain, Harvey, is that the stadium's original cost was $8 million. We borrowed $6.5 million of that. That's this number here, 6,950. But by the time we pay it off, like your house mortgage, you end up paying a lot more, so we will have paid $9 million. And then, you take that plus the million and a half that we took out of the general fund, that's $10,500,000. And then, I said we got $3 million of that back through the naming rights from Pringles, from P&amp;G, and we've already received and we're continuing to receive until the debt is paid off, the refund from the state on the sales tax. So, $10,500,000 is what we really have in it, or will have in it, and we've gotten $3 million back from other sources.
Whether it's six or seven million.
Yes, right. And you're right, the Sportsplex was actually $13.5 million.
I just think my constituents are going to view this much like the gentleman from East Jackson and say that we have so many needs and that this should not be a priority. Maybe the scoreboard, maybe that's what we do this year, but not the other. Maybe the scoreboard, maybe, maybe that's what we do this year, but not the other.
Well, I hope I haven't misled the council by my comment that if there were monies left from the radio allocation, but that's only if.
And several other items as far as the capital, as I indicated in the general review, that, that initial cost attached to each of those items is nothing but a, a best guess or it's their best effort in, in trying to determine how much it will cost. And for example, I know we have a traffic signal in the budget this year for demumbrium and, and Highland. And hopefully, through some redesign of, of that signal, we're going to, to show some savings there, substantial savings, I hope, which could be used in other places. But again, it's, the council has the priority list. And we have deferred for the last several years any, any repair and maintenance of the stadium. The lighting for one, because of, of the cost of it. The suites, obviously, were brought to our attention by the owners and, and the people who leased the suites after the budget, saying like, the season's coming up and these suites really need to be renovated to, to some extent. So, and, and the reason, obviously, we, we didn't use previous years as far as the capital for the, for the ballpark is that we use, we, priorities, again, we use the capital elsewhere where we felt like is more important. We may be at a point now, though, to where we could be in, in some, some jeopardy from, from Major League Baseball as far as the standards for the ballpark. And it is a double A ballpark, one of thirty, you know, in the nation. How much we spend on it will be the council's decision, either taking a part of this budget amendment or all of it or none of it, again, will be, will be made here. Is any other, any other discussion on this budget amendment? And all three, we just talked about one amendment, right? With the three, with the three elements of it?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the amendment?
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
A second. Any additional discussion? If not, council, please vote.
And the motion fails with four voting in favor and five voting against.
Okay, another budget.
The second budget amendment that we have today is seventy-five thousand for the Sportsplex Playground at Complex A, and this will be drawn from their fund balance. Mr. Boone has some details on that for you.
The Sportsplex now is a standalone enterprise fund, so it does not draw from any of the capital that we were previously addressing. What we're looking for there is a, a playground, again, to offer entertainment to the constituents who come to the park. And basically, it's for the younger children, again. And there's a breakdown of what it is, the equipment and virtual turf because of the surface, you basically can't just have grass and normal mud type field. And you don't want to have concrete for the safety of the children. So technology has provided for virtual turf, which has some resilience to it. And then there's grading, and the total cost is seventy-five thousand. That would be in Complex A, which is for the younger children. And it would be between the fields. It would be a playground approximately forty-six by forty as far as the size dimension. And let me just give you a little overview of the Sportsplex because it would not be coming out of the capital and the general fund. The results of the Sportsplex this year, basically, in operating, operations, not anything to do with the debt, is two hundred and eighteen thousand, seven fifty-four positive. So they have a positive variance for the year. And then the proceeding, then after the interest expense and the hospital contribution, it's two hundred and fifty-eight thousand altogether, a five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar positive situation. So they will have the monies to pay for this out of their operations. And to give you a, an overview of the activities and the economic development that comes from that, we did a little five-year study here, actually for Gary Taylor and his marketing of that area. Over the five-year period, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, four ninety-eight is our estimate because we don't really have turnstiles of the number of people that have visited the Sportsplex. And as you can see over here, in the most recent year was a hundred and seventeen thousand. The year before that was a hundred and thirteen thousand. And then in our startup years, those three years, it was two hundred and sixty-three thousand. And basically, we're drawing about sixty thousand people a year in travel ball. And that's where we estimate that roughly forty percent of those are coming from outside of the Madison County area, spending dollars, which we recoup through sales tax recovery and hotel motel. And then we have through the parks and rec, because the Sportsplex, I think many people don't realize this, is not just a travel ball field or facility. It's also open to the county leagues and also to special needs. That's about five thousand people there. So I don't know if there's many places in the City of Jackson or Madison County that show almost a half a million people have visited the park within that five-year period.
Okay, council has the amendment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion. Second. Any discussion from council? If not, council, please vote.
And the motion passes with eight members in favor and one abstaining.
Before we move to the next item, can I make a motion that we, we did the Pringles Park, vote on those items individually?
Individually, yes.
Absolutely. Any, any objection from council for going back to that particular budget amendment?
You have to rescind what we've done in order to do that. In order that to be done, and correct me if I'm right, Mr. Butler, that had, that motion that was defeated had to be rescinded. Is that correct?
Do we have a motion to reconsider the budget amendment?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Can I second it?
Sure. Any discussion? Okay, council, vote on that motion to reconsider.
And that motion, and that motion passes with seven members in favor, one voting no and one abstaining.
Okay, we'll go back to the, to the budget amendment for Pringles and for reconsideration. Is there, is there a motion?
And I think that the motion was we consider them individually. So we decide which one you want to move to approve.
Are we going to take them in order?
We can. What, what kind of order do you have them in, Ms. Baff?
Well, we've got them there on the screen. Twenty thousand, two hundred dollars for the suite.
I'll make a motion that we approve renovation of the seven suites.
Okay, is there a motion?
Second.
Made second. Discussion on that motion? No, council, please vote.
And that motion passes with six in favor and three against.
The second item is the video board, three hundred and six thousand dollars. And of that, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred is insurance recovery that we were reimbursed.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion for that and a second. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And that vote passes with eight in favor and one voting no.
The third item is the playground, one hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and ten dollars.
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second to that?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And that motion, that motion fails because only two voted in favor and.
Okay.
Six against, I think.
Thank you. Final item is consideration of invoices over ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
A second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
Vote passes eight in favor, one abstaining.
I'm sorry, I just.
Oh, you're voting yes.
Those are the impact.
What's final vote, Alina?
Unanimous.
The checks are.
There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.
Those checks have been written.